Good evening. Tonight Athens City Council is meeting in committee meetings. The first meeting, committee hearing tonight is Planning and Development. And there are three issues on the agenda. First up is a revocable license for 91 South May Avenue. As some of you might have, might remember that this issue came up last year where they wanted to do 91 South May. The residents there wanted to put a different, get a new revocable license put in to establish a new fence line. We felt uncomfortable with that based on recommendations from some of the city officials. However, they would like to renew the license that they now have, which was established in 2007. And so they're not planning on doing any different building or anything. We have the residents here tonight. So that has been signed off by all members of the city administration. So it's basically just a general easygoing renewal for 10 years. Is there questions?
I guess I'm, I'm a little bit unsure about that the earlier license-
They wanted to move the fence.
They wanted to move the fence. So this, this new one that's being submitted goes back to the old, the current conditions.
So it's like a renewal of an-
Got it. Okay.
Previous. Thank you. So that will be a straightforward renewal that we'll bring up next, next Monday. Okay. The second issue that we have this evening, agenda item, is a revocable license for 147 Columbus Road. This is kind of housekeeping. As you know, that Columbus Road had some work done on it this, this past summer. And because of that, there was some surveying done and things like that. And it was found that overlooked that there was a sign that was actually in, that's been there for a long time, in the right-of-way that did not have a license. So we want to put forward a license, a revocable license for that. And it's at 147, I think it's the chiropractor's sign. It's been there forever. So this is more upkeep. And all city officials have signed off on that and they have all their paperwork in. So, questions?
So that sign is staying in the same place?
Yes. It's just that now we want to do the paperwork to make sure that the revocable license is in the files. So, it wasn't known before that they were actually on their right-of-way. Sometimes the mapping of the right-of-way is nonexistent or out of date. So. Any questions? There's miscellaneous. I'm, I'm sure that you saw that the ODNR, Department of Natural Resources, sent a reply to our resolution about injection wells. Particularly, one injection well was going through a permitting process. I'm sure that probably most of you have read it. It's boilerplate. It's saying, "Don't worry." So if we weren't worried, we probably wouldn't have written the resolution. I, it's disconcerting every time we bring up as a city, an issue about permitting or injection wells, the response of the city, of the state-
State.
Is, "Don't worry." And after the experiences in West Virginia, I worry. After the experiences out on Route 50 with the truck that went over it last week, you know, there is issues. And the city, the state, the city has a right to know and a right to be concerned for the health and safety of our, of our residents. And to have the state blow us off by saying, "Don't worry," is insulting. That's my two cents. Anybody else on that?
Agreed.
So. Anybody? So duly noted on the response. It's been filed. Sorry. No more miscellaneous from anybody? Okay. That's the end of the Planning and Development Committee.
Okay. Transportation Committee. We have three folks here this evening to give us an update on their respective transportation issues. I'm going to let them come up. We have Michael Lockman, who represents Athens Transit, Lance Rep from HAPCAP, and Carolyn Conley from GoBus. So you guys can structure your presentation. They're going to give us a yearly update on how things are going.
Good evening. My name is Lance Rep from HAPCAP. I'm the Athens Mobility Coordinator. And I also serve as a supervisor over the GoBus, Athens Public Transit, Logan Public Transit, and Athens On Demand Transit. Overall, HAPCAP was responsible for 358,779 rides in Athens County in 2013. As Mobility Coordinator, it's my job to coordinate and be the single contact person for the city and the county for everything related to mobility and transportation. One of the things that we accomplished this year was in 2007, 2008, the Athens County Human Services Transportation Coordinated Plan was put together by the Voynavent Center. And it was adopted. And every five years, you have to renew that. So we accomplished that this year. And the commissioners approved it and we sent it on to ODOT. And the big thing behind that is, is any funding that comes through the FTA or ODOT, you have to have a coordinated plan to reference these activities to get any of the grant Athens On Demand Transit, we started in late 2011 and 12. And we started, had a full year in 2013, providing rides to persons with disabilities and elderly that needed to get to medical and health and human services type appointments. Operates five days a week and it's $2 one way. And we ask that you pre-register, which is really easy by just calling or going on the internet. We had 5,636 rides in 2013. 3,368 were persons with disabilities. Another 1,220 were accessible rides, which the county really needed something in the accessible area. And another 764 people were elderly with either medical or even grocery shopping. It's interesting that 35, 36% of them were work-related, which we're able to help a lot of the DD community get to and from work. A lot of their jobs are outside the normal 8:30 or 9 to 3 o'clock that AdCo and stuff provides transportation to. So we got, the service we provide lets them work at Kroger's and stuff and get off at 8 o'clock and stuff like that. 28% was medical and 13% was human health services. Another 10% of the rides went for groceries and stuff like that. So it gave a little freedom to people. Athens On Demand Transit is managed by Cliff Ware and our dispatcher is Kathy Emery.
Thank you, Lance.
Just a quick update on GoBus. GoBus is definitely still going strong. Our ridership numbers in 2013 were just shy of 48,000. Looking 2013 compared to 2012, this is down a little bit, almost 8%, but still really holding strong. If you look at academic school years, we've consistently had increases in ridership. From the 2012, 2013 school year to the 2013, 14, looking at just the fall semesters, we're looking at about a 5% increase in ridership. So it kind of depends on how you look at it. In 2013, we had two record-breaking months, one being in October, followed by the next record-breaking month in, in November. So that was exciting to see. We moved a lot of people to and from around the holidays. We've made a lot of improvements in 2013. One of them is a new GPS tracking system in which myself and several of the other managers are able to know exactly where the buses are on the road, when they arrive and depart different stop locations. We've also made this information available to our riders in a mobile app, which is Find GoBus. You can download that on, you know, a mobile device and actually see an estimated arrival time of the buses. We've done a lot better of controlling our ticket sales. In the past, we've had some troubles of knowing exactly how many people were going to arrive at the bus stop at any particular time. But we've done a lot better in that. We've, we've really controlled that. In addition, we've also had staff members at the Ohio University stops on Fridays and around holidays. If anyone's ever seen it, it gets a little crazy at that stop during that time. So we actually have anywhere from one to four staff members directing passengers, telling them which bus they need to get on, loading buses, making sure they get off on schedule. And that's made a big difference. I think the passengers appreciate it and it makes the driver's life a lot easier as well. We've made a couple of service changes. We added a $2.50 service fee onto our tickets. Big reason we did this was, as a nonprofit, we wanted to be able to earn some money to put into account so that when the buses need to be replaced, we actually have a little funds to work with. Now, we'll be applying for grants to replace the buses, but we still need to have a local match. And this service fee will help us raise money for that match. We've moved four of our stop locations throughout the year. Batavia, Logan, Marietta, and Parkersburg. We worked really closely with the communities to find good, good locations for these stops. And we've had a lot of positive feedback there. 2014, we're going to do some updates on our website, make that a little more user-friendly, and also make it easier to read and access from mobile devices. We're about to put out a new brochure with updated information. And we're really seeking out new ticketing agents so that more communities along the routes will be able to purchase tickets from an agent. And it won't be all online. And that's pretty much my update.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I'm Michael Lockman. I'm the manager for Athens Public Transit. And a quick recap of things that happened in 2013. We had a year of some pretty big changes. In brief, some of those changes were we lowered our standard fare from $1.50 to $1. We instituted fixed stops around the city of Athens. We increased our frequency of buses through uptown Athens to two an hour from one an hour. So you'll see more buses uptown. And lastly, we moved our main connecting stop to next to Baker Center on West Mulberry Street. Those changes have produced some pretty healthy gains in ridership. At this point, the past four months, we've been averaging about a 22% increase month-to-month 2012 to 2013. And that has extended into January of this year. If we compare January 2013 and January 2014, we're up about 19% despite the incredibly cold weather that we've had. All of that stacked up in 2013 to general public ridership of 65,792, or 65,525. And then if you add to that, we have a service contract with the Summit Coats Run Apartment Complex. So our contract ridership was 225,792. Add those together, that is 291,317 total rides. That's a record for our system. That's also, it makes us the largest rural transit system in the state of Ohio. So I'm, I'm happy about that. That's exciting.
The travel to the summit helps.
I wanted to highlight a couple of things that are coming up for us in 2014, as well as reviewing what happened in 2013. So we're getting more bus shelters this year. This is something that's been in process for over a year. But once the weather warms up, I think we've got a, a bid process in order and we're going to start ordering shelters for the city. We should be getting at least four of them. And another thing that we have going on that I'm really excited about, we have a chance to get GPS tracking, similar to what Carolyn's been able to add for GoBus this past year. And not only that, we have a chance to partner with Ohio University and with OU student government on this project. It's something that we've been talking about on and off for the past year. And student government was really helpful in advertising a lot of our service changes. I think that they helped us gain some of the ridership that we've gotten. And the ability to have real-time tracking, in other words, a website or a mobile phone app that you can look and see exactly where the bus is at any given time. It's hard to overstate how important that is to people's sense of the reliability of the service. So that's something that we're just embarking on right now, but it should be in place by the end of this year. The third thing that I'm excited about, we're hoping to do some more projects with Arts and Transit this year. And that's something that I hope I'll be able to update you all more on in the next several months.
Arts and Transit?
Arts and Transit.
Like painting the buses?
Well, we did wrap the buses this past year, but some things in the pipeline. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Steve?
I don't know a question. I just have a comment. And I, I really appreciate the growth that we've seen in the city transit, certainly with the GoBus. But in particular, you know, as most of you know, something that's, that's very passionate to me, that I'm passionate about, is Athens On Demand. I've heard, Lance, I've heard nothing but good things about the on-demand use. And hearing 5,000 riders, if I heard you correctly, speaks to that and the need that's associated with it. But being on the Commission on Disabilities, we, we hear about the, the positives all the time about Athens On Demand. The low fare, the fact that you could ride, if you wanted to, from Coolville all the way up to Gloucester for $2 one way and turn around and come back, for whatever reason. But anyway, that aside, it's, it's great. Like I said, I just, I want you to know that. I want you to know that the feedback that I've been getting from the citizens of Athens is, is that, you know, all of our transit is, is, has had great growth, but in, in particular, on demand.
Thank you very much. And I'll make sure I tell all the drivers and staff that you're coming.
Mayor Wile?
Oh, what council?
Sorry, Chris?
Just a few questions. And yes, congratulations. And I think that GPS system for the Athens Transit will be really helpful. We've seen that work in other cities. And I can remember waiting on campus and wondering, is the bus there? Did I miss it? So I think that'll be a real help to people. About GoBus, I, and I know that all of these programs are subsidized in part with finances from the city, also federal grants, grants from the Ohio Department of Transportation. Is the, so my question about GoBus is, is that federal or, and/or state source of funding still looking fairly positive? Because I know at one point, the, the low fees that you were able to collect for GoBus was in part because of those heavy subsidies. So I guess, is funding looking firm and the, so the prices for GoBus will stay approximately the same?
Yeah. I don't see the prices changing anytime soon. We've definitely recouped more in ticket sales than originally anticipated by the low fare. Those buses are going to run up and down the roads, whether there's four people or 40 in them. So the state's actually been quite pleased with our tickets, ticket revenue. Plus in the, the new FTA MAP 21 rules, they've put, I don't know the exact, they've put different wording in there that made the way we currently are doing our, our funding, with Greyhound is serving as part of the in-kind match, has made that more of a permanent system in order to, to access federal funds. So that's good for us. That's a good sign for the future.
I think the way the formula goes, all the money that the state gets from the FTA, there's a 12% or, I'm not sure exactly, but around 12% of the money has to be spent on enter, city bus routes. So, you know, we're kind of protected there. And the state is very pleased with what we've done. So they're, they're really behind us on this.
Okay. One other question about fees and fares. At one point, there was some interest on the part of the Graduate Student Senate in seeing about a student fee that would go towards transportation for all students. And I wasn't sure if that had moved forward at all. I know that Ohio State uses that option. I think Indiana University maybe uses that option too. So I wasn't sure if there'd been any more positive responses from the, the university on that or not.
I'd say it's certainly something that we continue to discuss.
Okay.
And we'll continue to discuss it in the future.
Good.
The university is, Michael was just telling me today, is real excited about this GPS because they want to tie it into their buses too. So we're looking at a kind of a coordinated purchase of this system.
Okay.
So that somebody can, is on a cat's bus, they can dial up and say, okay, I can get off here and go on to East State Street or... So the university has been very cooperative on a lot of different fronts with us.
Good.
And kind of thanks to Paul and Paul for the, the MOU process that really, I think, has turned this relationship around.
Mayor Wile?
What they asked you guys to do is actually get close to the mic over there. Tell people on the TV, Lance can hear you. My question is, you were talking about trying to do replacement buses with the GoBus. Do you have any, I think the lifespan of those was like five years, if my memory is correct? Do we need more or do we need replacements? And what's your anticipated schedule on that, do you know?
All the above. What I would ideally like to see is, right now, we have three buses that are owned by the city of Athens. I'd like to have a fourth. I think that would help us out. We wouldn't have to lease buses from lakefront lines on busier days. So that would definitely be more revenue in, in our pockets. We are working with the state to, to do just that, to get a fourth bus. And then, starting really hopefully this summer, replacing the three. We've been trying to stagger their mileage so that one is kind of ready for replacement before the other two. So then we're hoping in the next three years, starting this summer, we'll, we'll replace them. They're supposed to be million, million mile buses, but we're looking at about 500,000 miles that we'll want to swap them out, if not a little sooner.
Okay. And, and Michael, you have locations for these bus shelters?
We have some locations.
Okay. I was just wondering there. I know it's been a long time coming. That's why I'm asking. And I know we've moved things around. And Lance, you are participating with the Buckeye Hills Rural-
Yeah, I served on that committee.
Okay.
Of the regional transit thing. Also participate in the Access 2040 Planning for ODOT. And just about three weeks ago, I went to the strategic planning for ODOT for the next five years. I was a guest as a panelist and everything. So there was a lot of good things happening at the state level that we're participating in.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. I get, I get stuck in the city doing a lot of stuff here, but I'm glad that you're, you're out there. And again, I've heard about the Athens On Demand as a positive thing. Very useful, very needed.
Just a couple items in Michael, I, I owe you a meeting and I understand that. I don't do this, but the city of Athens does. So we have a Twitter account. So I was able to see during the heavy snow event, GoBus is not running on a certain day. I'm wondering if there's a way we can connect that in so that our media can release that information at the same time. And I think we can. So we'll just have a conversation-
Sure.
-with our Government Channel Director on that. And then we do have a Municipal Arts Commission that I think would be interested in your arts and transit endeavor. So I can assist you in guiding that way. So, that's all.
Member Pettler?
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. I was going to add to that as well. I think that with the efforts of the planner, C, planner Paul Oog, and the essence of Athens, I know it hasn't been formalized, but that there is potential with something like a shelter for the buses to be both creative and utilitarian. And it is something that we can consider or look at if it falls into the essence of Athens, bigger picture. But overall, I definitely applaud your respective efforts. We know that transportation is definitely difficulty, it's difficult to navigate if you're in the rural environment as well as certain economic, socioeconomic status. And it can be, lack of access to, transportation can be a huge hindrance and difficulty for employment. And that's essential for moving and progressing forward. So I applaud what you guys are doing. So thank you.
Any other comments from council, questions? Thank you all.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Good call.
I have one other item on transport. Paula, I'm just wondering if you might mention where things are going. And Chris Nysely, you may be able to answer too, on the South Loop, where we are with that?
South Green Drive, uh, South, South Green Drive Road.
Right.
South.
The South Green, Northeast Campus roadway.
I'm not.
We're working with them for, in the plans stage right now. They're going to need some assistance in getting utilities relocated.
I saw that the Board of Trustees did advance it forward or voted yes. So.
I assume that they'll, will be proceeding with plans and then they'll be bidding it and then construction will start this summer. That's their hope.
And I know that when we, the presentation was made earlier, there weren't a lot of questions. So I would hope that if other council members continue to have questions, that those come forward. But we also know that Chris sits on the committee, Chris Nysely and Paula. So if there is any questions, I think we're pretty well involved in the process. And I just kind of want the community to know that, that we are very well involved in the process. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
How you doing? He's in charge. No, I hope he's in charge. City and Sa- Safety Services, we have a couple items on the agenda tonight. Jennifer is going to speak to us about Beautification Day.
We have the Athens, annual Athens Beautification Day coming up on April 13th. And so we have a guest with us today, Rose Troyer, to speak with us a little bit more about some of the details and opportunities to get involved in that collaborative project between the university and the city. And Rose is the Chair of the Athens Beautification Day Committee. So thank you for coming, Rose. And we look forward to learning more about the project this year and how we can all help.
All right. Well, thank you guys for having me. I'm also the Off-Campus Life Commissioner for student government too. So if you're wondering why I'm here as well, I do want to give you guys a quick presentation about Beautification Day, just to recap previous years and such. So a quick agenda, these are the six things we'll be going over. So it first started in 2005. That means that this year is the 10th anniversary of Beautification Day. Or the 10th time, I don't, that's kind of, it's a weird thing because you can maybe 2015. I was really confused about that. The first year, there were 150 volunteers. Let's move forward into the statistics to show how much it's changed. So last year, we had over 1,400 volunteers. This year, we're shooting for 2,000 to 2,500 in hopes. I know we're shooting for a lot, but we're also going up for more projects as well. So that's the hopes for this year. It's a big expansion. So there's that. About the day, the, oh, it's the 13th, not the 12th. I apologize for that mistake. But it starts at 12:00 PM as registration. We're hoping to streamline the registration with all of the extra students that we're going to have. That way, we can start our speakers at 12:30. And then the committee, Jen and Chris were both there. We decided to expand the project time from 1:00 to 3:00 to 1:00 to 4:00 to allow for more time to have more like substantial projects. So that if you have to drive a 15 to 20 minutes, that way you can do more. Then there's going to be food and entertainment. I'm not quite sure what they will be, but be excited for the surprise, I guess. And then just a couple of projects that we have lined up this year. One of our big new ones is the Wayne National Forest. Gary's been a great help with that. The highway cleanup, we're hoping to get those in with ODOT. The increase of speed has changed our, first plans initially because it's 70 now and we don't really want as many people on the side of the road cleaning up because it's not as safe. So what's different this year is that we're trying to expand, we did expand the timer. I talked about that. We're also expanding the project area, hoping to reach out to the Plains and Nelsonville. We've heard, we've received some information back. We're still talking about that. Hopefully, we'll get four to five projects out in that area. And as well, we're hoping to team up with the community and have, I have all of spring break to match up community members with student volunteers. And hopefully, we'll be able to have a more of a, how did it was phrased, town and gown intermingling. So we can all get together and be closer. So here's how to sign up. There's the link, which isn't fun at all. So if you go to Eventbrite.com and just type in Athens Beautification Day 2014, you can find how to register. And we are really welcoming, we want all committee, all committee, all the community to register if they can, if they want to. Families, young kids. You get a free T-shirt. It's free. It's a lot of fun. I'll be there. So I just wanted to run through how, this is what it looks like when you sign up. So I just wanted to run through how, this is what it looks like when you sign up. That's the email you email if you want to get ahold of me. But, so it's just your first name, your email. Then you'll say whether or not you have transportation, and that may or may not matter. You may end up down the street from where, from College Green. So you might not have to drive. It's just so that we know in case you are in a project that's in the Plains. And then, you choose whether you're a student or a community. And then, you, once you decide there, there's an option. If you're registering with a group, for example, if I were registering, I'd register with Student Senate. And then, you can pick what size t-shirt. And like I said, they are free. And then, if you guys have anybody who wants to submit a project, they are due by February 28th. I might be able to have some leeway if there's some come in like a couple days after, that's fine. But this is the email you would send them to, OhioUOCL@gmail.com. And also, I have a handful of sponsorship packets here as well, if anybody wants to get involved in sponsoring Beautification Day, or knows somebody or a business that would. So I have a handful of these, if anyone wants, I'll stay until you guys are done, if anyone wants to pick one up on their way out. And are there any questions?
Could you give us the email for emailing ideas one more time? Do you have that there?
Yeah, it's OhioUOCL@gmail.com.
Okay.
Oh, Gmail.
And then, I'm sorry, the deadline again for project ideas, February?
February 28th.
28th, okay.
Anytime over spring break, I'll be there to get it. Which is March 2nd through the 8th. I guess everyone else is probably not nearly as excited about that as I am.
So I remember when Mayor Wile and I 10 years ago met with the water polo team and we started discussing all of this, and it's incredible to see how it's grown over the years. And I think that the project sites and what happens there, you know, is a real big organizing tool for you in terms of making sure, you know, how many is too many and, you know, how much can you get done in the time period? So it's a huge organizational thing for you. So thank you for taking that on.
Oh, no problem. I've actually had a lot of fun, so.
You're a chair. You don't have to put your hand down. I was raising my hand and waiting for you to notice me.
I just spoke. I just spoke.
If possible, send us the link so we can put it on our city website.
Oh, I can definitely do that.
Okay. So, and I know normally we sponsor for about $1,000, so send us an invoice so we can bill us so we can send you money.
Thank you.
And if years pass, sometimes we've said that and it never happens. We never get the...
Oh, it'll happen.
Okay, good.
I assure you.
But again, there are, you talked about the Plains. There's no real organization up there, but I think there's the Lions Club up there that's pretty...
There's that, or the Athens Bulldogs. I could put you in touch with them. Deputy Director Ron Lucas.
So there's opportunities up there. I think that's a good idea up there. There's not really, there's a community there, but it's not formalized, and that would be worthwhile, just pulling them in, as well as Nelsonville.
Thank you. I have a friendly suggestion. I love this program and I think it's done wonders for a lot of, all the projects throughout the city. But I know that there was some confusion last year with the team leaders in terms of where the tools go back to once they were done raking or spreading mulch or whatever was going on. And so, maybe this year, just making sure that's clear to all your team leaders where the equipment needs to go, where it needs to come back to.
As opposed to Ron's office?
As opposed to Ron's office or my garage.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, that'll be dealt with. This year, we're hoping to have a project leader who's informed beforehand of all of the statistics for that individual project, instead of one person having to do two or three and then just telling this group this and this group that. And people like, yeah, okay, I got it. So hopefully, it'll be a little bit more organized. We've, I've had a lot of help from the student government and the school. People just, people want to volunteer, so it's great.
Sure.
Well, I would just also add that this event is getting more and more press because you have Gary Chansey, who's the Information Officer for the Wayne National Forest, who's also connected with Keep America Beautiful. This project is getting widespread across the country in terms of people watching and seeing what we're doing and hearing about it because it gets written up in their newsletter and all those kinds of things. But my point is, yes, the more you organize it, the better it looks and all those kind of things, because there are other places that are trying to replicate similar. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Rose. I know you were originally scheduled to come in two weeks ago when we had, I guess it was the sub-Arctic temperatures, that time that kept us from meeting, not the snowfall. But I do want to ask all community members who are able to come out and help alongside the university students. That's what makes it meaningful. Last year, I was able to volunteer with my family, my children, my cousins, my husband, lots of folks from my neighborhood. So, you know, it's the interaction between the people who live here year-round and the people who are part of our community for anywhere from one to six or seven years that can really make this event meaningful for the whole community and the campus. And so, I appreciate your work and look forward to serving with you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second item tonight is the solid waste recycling contract extension. The original contract was 2007 to 2010, has been renewed once since then, where it went from 2010, or sorry, 2012 to 2014 as an extension. This would be, again, a one-year extension that would go from July 1st through June 30th of 2015. Again, this is in collaboration and cooperation with Ohio University. I know our Service Safety Director's been working, and the mayor's been working hard on coordinating with Ohio University in having this contract go forward for another year.
Yeah, essentially, they're having some structural changes within the Waste District and the nonprofit, Athens Hocking Recycling. So to let it shake out, we're working on just, you know, extending hours for another year. Ohio University's done the same. The, I think we're also, we're talking about household hazardous waste possibly this year?
Correct.
Correct.
But that's, that'll be a separate contract.
That'll be a separate.
It's not related to the renewal.
No. But the renewal is just to make it so the transition for them is less bumpy.
Any questions?
We'll need ordinance on it, of course.
Steve, I did read in the newspaper that they're going, they're also looking at restructuring the solid waste and looking, going from union employees to non-union employees. Did I read that correctly?
I think that's the case. I think they might unionize just the same. It sounded like they're, again, they're splitting off the, there's a confusion of the hierarchy and chain of command and how this organization is structured with the solid waste district and the nonprofit. They're working towards pulling them apart and entangling them. At this point, the question, I went to the meeting this morning, it sounded like they would be moving from one union possibly to another, as far as I know. I wasn't sure exactly because I came in a few minutes late and they'd already gone through that piece of it already. But one of the union shop leaders was there and one of the county commissioners both seemed to think that it would be working out.
It's my understanding that they're indicating that the separation, there'll be two separate entities, but the current employees will be grandfathered in the system. It's what happens in the future. So they recognize our concern about that, too. Good paying jobs, good wages for the work that they do. I did want to clarify that we've had this relationship because I'm in the process of producing or providing public records from the late 80s, ever since the city got out of the garbage recycling. We didn't even have, you know, and then recycling started. So it was kind of like recycling and then it became a melded contract for both the garbage refuse hauling and the recycling.
Steve, I have a couple of questions. Regarding the renewal contract, how long would that be for? Would that be a year, two years generally?
One year.
One year.
One year, okay. Because I wanted to share with you feedback that I'm receiving from people in the community about support for eventually moving towards single stream. So I know that that is, I believe that's part of the long-term goal, at least I would hope that that's part of the goal, and I support that. But I wanted to let you know that neighborhood people are expressing support in that direction.
There's, go ahead.
We're glad to hear that. I know that on the Code Ad hoc meeting, both Jeff and Michelle are painfully aware of the fact that a single stream would be so much easier for the consumer and provide larger... This is really to try to set them up, Steve was indicating to get their MRF in place, the Materials Recovery Facility. But that's, you know, they have to determine funding, they already have the land in the building.
Part of the, there was a five-year strategic plan that was adopted last year, 13, maybe 12. So there's a plan that was to go to a MRF, Materials Recovery Facility, as well as go to a single stream structure. How to get there from point A to point B is another matter. The other question, of course, is whether both counties were interested in going to that direction. This, again, part of the confusion is they're so entwined that you've got employees working for both entities and how that works, and both boards were the same board, and that was sort of some of the issue. So it is a transition. We're trying to help them out and make sure our garbage and recycles are picked up at the same time.
And that was Athens and Hocking County, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
If you look back, way back, there used to be actually four other counties, five other counties involved in this. That was the original split off.
I just wanted to say a thank you to the solid waste group at this point for picking up on schedule in this incredibly cold and snowy and icy weather. I know there was a group of a few residents who actually had pizzas sent out to the office, so when they arrived with their trucks later, that they would have some pizza. I mean, when you think of these people out on the trucks in the cold, so I know that management is going through these other issues, but in general, you know, we do appreciate their service.
It's not an easy job.
Sure. Well, and again, along those lines, hats off to our street crew for keeping the streets pretty darn clear. So that's noble in this weather.
They're really doing the best they can and they're working hard and we're all judiciously applying salt because of the salt supply issue, so thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Kent just mentioned, Member Butler, just saying. Because, you know, you think about it, it's really stretching the few plows that we do have and trucks that we have, you know, I think, and I think the citizens have done a pretty good job, but, you know, patience is paramount because we do have limited resources when it comes to street cleaning and removal of snow and salting and everything. But yeah, I think the city's been doing a great job.
And since we're on the topic, keep your sidewalks clean. Keep cleaning them. Take that ice off.
If you have sidewalks.
If you have sidewalks. How many council members have sidewalks?
I do. Mine are clean. Where you at?
I don't have sidewalks.
I don't have sidewalks. I have a snow shovel.
I'm a kid.
Very good. Watch out, there's none out for sale. I told you there's none in the stores.
But I was gone for part of the time, and it's tricky to take care of sidewalks when you're out of town, obviously. You have to either find someone to help or have someone cover it.
And I would encourage businesses, once again, you know, down like on East State Street, that's, we have a great bus system and people are taking the bus because they don't want to drive in this horrible weather. And then, they get out and I saw somebody fall the other day trying to go up and over snow that had been plowed off of their parking lot, you know. So there, you know, I figure if my next-door neighbor who's 86 can figure out how to get somebody there to help, you know, calling neighbors or whatever, pooling together and getting people out there, then businesses can.
Hire all these kids that are in school.
That's right. I have a, I'm...
Very good. We, the Code Office issued 175 warnings for sidewalk clearance last week alone, so...
Businesses as well.
Yes, they were going down East State Street after, so you've known.
I'm not even talking about East State. I'm thinking in the closed-in neighborhoods, businesses that don't shovel and that, I mean, I wouldn't think they'd want somebody to fall on their sidewalk. But there are quite a few businesses that don't shovel.
And then, there's also landlords who have come, I've seen them come out and shovel for, that's part of their tenants, because, you know...
Really appreciate that.
Yeah. Especially because tenants are gone over Christmas. Yeah, that's just, so...
I know this isn't on the agenda, but I do want to say the Commission on Disabilities is going to be, we just received information from ADA when it comes to street, sidewalk, clearing of sidewalks and whatnot, and it's something that the commission is going to be looking into and comparing that to our current ordinances in the city. But it's important on multiple levels. Like Member Fall was saying, it can be someone who's 85 or it can be someone who's in a motorized wheelchair and it's, it becomes impossible to get around.
Or dangerous, because we saw somebody in the street the other day with a walker and, you know, because there was no way around, you know, the snow in the driveway. So thank you to the Code Office for working on that this week. I know it's not been best of temperature for them either, so...
And thank you, Mayor, for bringing up the topic.
Yay. We'll need Matterhorns.
I don't think we have any miscellaneous, so therefore, it's all for City Service Safety.
Okay. The next committee will be Finance and Personnel, and we have six items tonight for your review. And I'll go through them hopefully with enough detail, but as usual, we have Service Safety Director and the mayor and the auditor and deputy auditor here to help us with some of the explanations. The first item will be for the Community Development Block Grant, and this is the Small Cities Formula Program, and this is for our 2015 funding. And as I understand, we have a probably a small description that is due for us to be coming up with or for project ideas for this.
We'll have two public hearings.
Okay. And it's typically been used for a variety of projects, for improving streets or sidewalks, preserving historic landmarks, community centers, solving problems around the community. So we'll have the profile for our project idea, once we go through these public hearings and vet ideas, we'll go to the Appalachian Regional Commission, is that correct? Or no?
CDBG.
CDBG, oh, straight to CDBG, okay. So just to let you know that we'll have the public hearings coming up for those and for people to be thinking about ideas of things that we might want to be seeing, projects in the, in the area and the community.
There are a couple of projects that have already been brought forward, one of them being the Franklin Street drainage repairs and possibly the rubberized surface at the community center playground area, much like what's out at the South Side Park right now.
Yeah, we spent a little bit more than half the money there, but we still have a little chunk of it and maybe supplement what we have. The other one is some sewer work on the station, I guess on Depot.
That's a greater project. That would be more related to that critical infrastructure, that's another grant that we'll be coming forward, but that's more like a June deadline. We just haven't, we're just starting the discussion. But it was storm drainages, Councilwoman Patterson said, on Franklin that we've received.
And to supplement this, of course, is we're working with Hapcap to actually explore the other pools of money for CDBG, in terms of critical infrastructure. We'll prior to agreement with them for some of the work on Richland, we've done that. And then, we have for maybe actually helping out applications for these other pools of money. So that's one of the other things we'll be wanting to move forward to is entering into an agreement for a supplement administration of the other CDBG grant programs.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Our next agenda item has to do with the community center. And you might remember that when we made the improvements, the energy efficiency improvements to the center several years ago, we borrowed money to do that and borrowed $220,000 in a loan. And that loan comes due on February 28th. So what the city does with each of these loans is decides in consultation with the auditor and city administration on how much of that to pay down. And this year, the recommendation of the auditor and the admin and the administration and the Finance Committee is to pay down $75,000 on that loan amount. That would leave a balance in the principal of $145,000. Last year, our rate on the loan was 0.35% interest, and we will be able to get that same interest rate again this year. So that would be our recommendation on how much to pay down of that. So an ordinance would move forward to renew the loan and for the $145,000. Any comments, questions?
Are we adding interest to the payment? I didn't know, auditor.
I thought it was...
Or if it's just a flat out?
Yes.
Yes. So $75,000 plus interest?
Right.
Okay, and we'll be able to get that amount? Okay, and we'll be able to get that amount then for the clerk?
And I think the deadline for that's the end of the month, right? So, we need to spend rules on it. And I know Rich Campitelli's talked about trying to roll that money back into his appropriation pool. We've spent, you know, re-upped the loan and put it into the mix as soon as possible for his facilities.
Okay.
Already done?
Okay.
Hello?
Good.
Well, I mean, that's what we do all the time. We have to show the whole amount, but when we estimate the revenue, we, we put the amount we're borrowing, we're rolling over back into it.
I suspect you should be close to a mic. Okay.
Our third item is the parking and garage elevators. This is a municipal parking garage. And we, city administration has been working with Burgess and Nyple, an engineering firm, to be performing an evaluation. And this will be on the entire garage. The fee for the, the evaluation of the garage and the repairs that are needed is approximately $38,000. And so, we would need that as part of an appropriation ordinance coming up in the next week.
Actually, I think we have the money in TC 500s as a recommendation of the auditor. Last week, there was an email saying that we were worried about the money being in professional services, the 200s and 300s.
That's right, and it is here.
But associated with the project, the two, the TC 500s have about $120,000 in it. So, we're pulling money out of that for the initial.
Okay, so that's more of an update. It's not an appropriation that's needed, but just to let you know that the evaluation will be going on.
I, I have a. You're saying $38,000 for the elevator and parking garage?
For the evaluation.
For the evaluation, okay. I, I missed that. I apologize. That seemed a little low.
Well.
For renovations.
Actually, the renovat-, yeah, the renovation, we start, remember, we were trying to get the elevators up and running.
Right, right.
They pulled back on the timetable on that. So, but at the same time, because we had the spaulding on the parking garage, we decided to, we need to do a comprehensive review of it. I think they'll be doing it during March. We're trying to get Burgess and Nyple in here during the spring break, so they have an empty parking garage to play with, to do the evaluation.
And if I understand this correctly, for the elevators themselves, you know, the, originally, there was going to be retrofits to the elevators to bring them up to ADA standards. But in looking further, it's, it's, it's not possible. So therefore, there will be new elevators that go into the parking garage.
It depends on what we end up with, yes. We have, we have also, we're going to be looking at the, there's a leak, there's actually a seepage from the south side of the, that little pocket park there into the elevator shafts. We're going to look at that. So, we'll be doing some adjustments and play with that entirely. Again, it depends on what we end up with in terms of the evaluation and how much money it's going to cost us. First and Nyple actually did some of the work in 1999. I think at that time, they, we spent about $1 million on renovations in general. The coating, the plastic coating, you see on the gray coating on that, some of the other infrastructure, brickwork, as well as, trying to remember what else was there, just general concrete repairs. In fact, it's, it's due. It's, it's been, you know, this length of time, so it's time to look at it again. But the first start is to get a beat on it, and that includes the elevators, too.
Thank you for the additional information. Our next topic has to do with taking the next steps on electric aggregation. And you may remember that this was on the ballot for us this past year, for the city as well as the county. And our, the city's move on the next step is to be appropriating $25,000 for professional services, so that we take the next steps correctly on, on moving forward with electric aggregation for the city.
And I would, I would recommend taking that out of the Athens Enhancement 250 Fund. Again, this is to hire consultants in conjunction with the county to set up our electrical aggregation. Talking to the County Commissioner, Chris Schmeele, he has a Roger Wilkins who's been interested in doing this and has some expertise. Whether he has enough expertise is always a good question, but I think he does. I think it's, it's not really that difficult. I know we'll be meeting with somebody from the Turning Points system, but I don't know if that's just to hear other options. We've met, in form, I've met with other energy suppliers to see what kind of mix they can offer. Most of them want to take it on themselves and do it all themselves. So, we're hoping to do it in-house, or at least locally as possible. But this would be like the priming consultant work before it, and the intention to have it all done as soon as possible. When, it depends how it works out.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Member Pat?
I, I guess my comment would be, I think the main overriding mission with the ballot, when, when everyone voted for it, was to lower the rate.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's always, it's, all these other issues are, are great, but I think that was one of the, the main things to go with aggregation, to, to keep that in mind. And I know everyone is, but I just, I felt like it's important to remind. The voters voted for that, to bring the rates down.
I understand that. I believe you're going to be involved in some of this, right? And that was your intention. Okay. You can keep reminding us whenever we get a stray.
So, we'll be moving forward with this as soon as possible, then?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yes.
Okay, okay. The next item has to do with assessments for various projects that we've had for sidewalk and street improvements, those being North Lancaster Street. We're now ready to move the ordinances forward for the final assessment for the sidewalk repairs there. And then the University Estates final assessment. And you might remember that as we have moved through both of these projects over the last year, it's been a series of legislative actions. We first do a resolution of necessity, then we work with the Engineering Office to find out which sidewalks are in need of repair, and then working with property owners to let them know in the case of the, the street repair or, and/or the sidewalk repair, what the costs will be per linear foot. So, we're now ready to move that forward. The University Estates final assessment will be prepared by a firm that works with the city. In this particular case, that was a larger project that involved both the streets and the sidewalks as well. So, be glad to come to final closure on, on, on that, the assessments on that. Under miscellaneous, we have four items, and I'll go through them in as much organized detail as I can. We have several items first that are going to, the first part is that we're going to be decreasing appropriations in several accounts. We're going to be doing a transfer in some accounts. We're going to have some new appropriations. Actually, it's only three things, so it's not as complicated as I thought. For the decreasing in the appropriations, some of these amounts are because they're based on recommendations from the auditor that we're making adjustments. So, several of them are very small amounts of money. Several of them are fairly large. The tourism account will be decreasing by $5,000. The clerk's computer account, we will be decreasing by $8,000. There's a program that we have that has an account that's called the House Arrest Program, and this is basically a monitoring program for persons needing to be monitored by the courts. And there is $3,000 in a particular account now. It's the 233 account. But what we'll be doing is moving that from 233 account, and we will now make another account that's active. We're trans-, and we'll be transferring the money, money over to that. In the recreation account, and this is one of our larger ones, that we realized that when we made the appropriation for the budget for this coming year in the transaction class 100, that's for salary, we ended up appropriate, or budgeting and appropriating twice as much money as we needed to for that account. And so, what we need to do is bring that back in line, and so we're going to be decreasing the appropriation in the Recreation Department's TC Transaction Class 100, which is salaries. And that will make sure that we've got money in the other accounts, so that they can pay for their other expenses during the year. The other larger one has to do with the capital fund. That's a 580 account, and we're going to be decreasing that by $100,000. And in part, the money that comes into this account is a portion, it's 2% of a portion of our income tax revenue for the year. And so, the auditor is making a recommendation to lower this based on our current anticipated income tax revenue. And then the other large one is the medical and internal services account, where we will be, we will be making a decrease in the transaction class 300 of $370,000. You may remember that last year, we were looking at our medical expenses during the year, and we needed to make some adjustments for, to allow to be able to pay our medical expenses because we're self-insured. And we ended up, we're now making an adjustment back, so we can decrease that amount by $370,000. So, those are the series of six decreases that we're going to be having. The transfer, the second item, the transfer, is the one that I mentioned before with the House Arrest account, that, that, the account 233. We're going to be closing that one out and beginning to use account 237. And so, that transfer will be $2,282.47. That's the balance of what's in that one account. So, we're just closing it out and transferring it. For new appropriations, we're going to revisit for a moment, time-wise, I had to go back in my head, too, is these are the last of the Oxbow Bridge repairs and expenses. And so, we will need new appropriation for the remainder of the portion of the Oxbow project expenses. So, big-picture wise, if you think about that project, it was a $3.8 million project. And by the end of last year, I believe we had spent about 200, $2.474 million of the project monies. So, now what we're doing is tracking the payout of the remainder of the last of these Oxbow improvement expenses. And that amount, that last amount will be $616,000, $616,514.82. So, a little over $600,000 for the remainder of those expenses. Some of those, approximately $45,000 of that $616,000 is OUs portion of the Oxbow project expenses. And I think those are all of the transactions and decreases and new appropriations that we're needing through the Finance Committee tonight. Any other items that anybody else might have, or any questions?
Just one item. We're putting a posting out for our Chief Information Officer, just so you guys know.
Is it IT? That's IT, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And so, this has been a position that's been vacant for a while and without posting it, okay.
Vacant, but in the staffing ordinance, and we're ready to proceed, so.
Okay. And I believe that may be the last of the. That's last. The, the items that we have for tonight. Yep. So, that's, and I believe this is our last committee meeting for tonight. Is that true? Yes.
Yep.
And so, we can adjourn.